Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Pander Leon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Rummel is attending remotely. Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have quite a crowd here tonight. Got lots of good things to do. First item on the agenda is comments by mayor, and I think we'll just get right into it here. I'd like to introduce Kathryn Waldeck, Chairman of the Public Service Award Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really good to be here, especially on such a happy occasion for such a very special individual. The Lawrence Temple Distinguished Service Award honors a living volunteer for distinguished public service to local government or community organizations in the city of Lake Forest. I was honored to serve as chairman of the committee this year, and as many of you probably know, when you serve as a chair of a committee, it's really nice to be handed a dream team. And on that note, I would like to acknowledge, they need no introduction, but I would like to acknowledge my fellow committee members. Here with me tonight is Prue Beidler. In addition to Prue, Debbie Saran serves on the committee, and Mike Adelman. They're not with us, able to be with us tonight, but they both send their warmest regards and warmest congratulations. We had an outstanding group of candidates this year, and it really causes me to reflect or want to reflect on just the depth and the breadth of public service that we have here in this city, and the enormous amount of talent, of people who are willing to just selfishly give their time and their efforts year after year after year. And included in that certainly is tonight's honoree, Maddie Bronson Dugan. Many of you probably know Maddie from her tireless efforts on behalf of the Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital Women's Board, where she has contributed in countless ways in just about every capacity over the years. Many of you probably know her from her many, many years of volunteer service at the hospital. She's often the first person you see when you walk in through the hospital. I'm pretty sure that Maddie began her volunteer service when she was old enough to put on one of those candy striper uniforms. I would not be surprised if it was a birthday gift for her that year, and she has pretty much never looked back. She has never stopped giving. She was instrumental, I believe, in the construction and building and approval of the new hospital. I don't think that building would be there in its glorious state if it were not for Maddie and her support and her efforts. But she really goes way beyond that. She served on the Building Review Board. She has made many contributions in long service to Elloa Farms. She made contributions to Deer Path Golf Course with the renovations of that project. She simply, quite simply, always answers the call. She epitomizes what this award should be. She is truly an unsung hero in our community, and we on this committee are very happy and very proud to be a part of bestowing this honor on you tonight, Maddie. And without further ado, I'm going to read what you will receive. The Lawrence R. Temple Distinguished Public Service Award honoring a living volunteer for distinguished public service to local government or community organizations in the city of Lake Forest. Whereas individuals selected for the Lawrence, Larry, Our Temple Distinguished Public Service Award must demonstrate leadership, responsiveness to the public and staff, an extended duration and scope of service, constructive participation in meetings, and the ability to represent the community's values. And whereas Maddie Bronson Dugan was nominated for the Lawrence R. Temple Distinguished Public Service Award, and whereas the award committee was struck by the depth and breadth of her civic and community service to the city of Lake Forest. And whereas Maddie is a well-respected volunteer and leader who is truly passionate about the city of Lake Forest, a caring and involved citizen whose values and commitment reflect her altruistic, honest, and heartfelt love for Lake Forest. And whereas Maddie was born in Lake Forest and spent most of her life giving back to the community that she loves, adding value and perspective to its governance, character, and quality of life by offering her time and talents to many city and community-wide initiatives. And whereas Maddie served as a volunteer devoting time and passion to the city of Lake Forest Building Review Board from 2007 to 2013, the ad hoc hospital legacy committee, and she continues to serve with passion as a sustaining member of the Women's Board of Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital, supporting the hospital through fundraising, volunteerism, education, and advocacy, just as family members before her did. And whereas Maddie in her various roles communicated thoughtfully and respectfully, lied quietly and with dignity, offered insightful and astute observations, and put forth balanced and creative solutions that built upon the past while looking forward to the future. And whereas Maddie always put the long-term best interests of the entire Lake Forest community first. And whereas the award committee believes that Madeline B. Dugan, like Larry Temple, has distinguished herself with civic contributions that benefit the citizens of Lake Forest. Now therefore, Madeline B. Dugan is awarded the Lawrence R. Temple Distinguished Public Service Award the 16th day of May, 2002. Really large flowers.
Yes, these are absolutely gorgeous. Wow.
Do you want us up there? You forgot to mention your sense of humor. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I just really wanted to thank everybody for this award. It's really meaningful. And yes, my candy striper costume, uniform, was my 14th birthday present for my mother. And I've been at the hospital, I am 70, it's 57 years at the hospital as a volunteer in two. Helping restore Elloa and being on the Building Review Board and being part of the caucus and just everything that the city needs, and I know you all feel the same way about the city as I do, and thank you very much.
Can we get a, yeah, can we do it?
Want to stand up?
Yeah.
Hey, Prue? Prue?
We have, you move this way a little bit. One more person over here. And then you two.
Can we say a couple of words for Maddie?
Congratulations, Maddie. Very well deserved. It's nice to see another name on the plaque. Not all of you may realize, but this is an award that is not given every year. It's given when deserved, and we've gone for several years, on and off during its life, and so it's great to have somebody else on the plaque. Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is swearing in of two new fire battalion chiefs. Will Andrew Allen and Andrew Rick please step forward?
Did I say something briefly?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, thanks for having us here tonight. I'd ask all of our firemen that are out in the wings there, come on in while we get the other group out. We're glad to have the ability to be here tonight. It's been probably two or three years since we've done swearing in in the council chambers due to circumstances and logistics, but we're happy to be here and share in a great moment. We've got two lieutenants being appointed to battalion chief today, and the future looks really bright for our organization. So without any further ado, we're going to call Andy Allen up first.
I, Andrew W. Allen, do solemnly swear.
I, Andrew W. Allen, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the city of Lake Forest.
And the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the city of Lake Forest.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of battalion chief.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of battalion chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
First of all and foremost, I want to thank my family. Nicole, I, there's no words, and I can't say how grateful I am for everything that you do to support me all the times that I'm gone, all the times that I'm driving, takes me away from you and the rest of the family. So the support that you give is, and the rest of my family, I'm doing it in order of age. Audley, who lives in Madison, he drove all the way here for tonight. Thank you, man. Appreciate it. Ainsley, came back from lacrosse today, from school, to be here. Island, let's just say she came from Nashville, to be here. She goes to school in Nashville. Watson, who goes to school here at Lake Forest, not a far drive, and Campbell, also goes to school here in Lake Forest, nice to be here. You guys mean everything to me. And the furthest driver of all is my sister-in-law, Hannah, and her two kids, Gemma and Joyce. They have been a tremendous amount of support for me and Nicole and the rest of the family, even though they live all the way up in Wisconsin, which is far north as you can go. So thank you very much. I can't do this without thanking the entire department, from the top down, bottom up, doesn't matter. You guys are, and girls, are the greatest people that I could ever imagine working with. And I hope that I get to spend the next six years, however long it's going to be, working with all of you. And I truly love you guys and girls, and just enjoy being a part of it. So thank you, and chief, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next up, we have Andy Rick. Going to be hard with two Andys, so. We can put it right here.
I, Andrew J. Rick.
I, Andrew J. Rick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the city of Lake Forest.
And the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the city of Lake Forest.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of battalion chief.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of battalion chief.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Cut back the follow-up.
Yeah, I was not prepared as he was. Not a lot, but a few things I'd just like to say, and it's always going to be thank you to everybody. I'll start with family. My family is a little bit smaller. They don't go with me, they don't get to drive anymore. Just the support that I get from you guys, I know that this is a big job to be a part of, and it becomes part of your family. I know that it takes us away from a lot of things, and families, and weekends, and parties, and entertainment, and baseball games, and things that we do miss, but I really appreciate the support. I know you guys know how much you mean to me. So thank you very much. I love you guys a lot. A little less to somewhere, my little guy walking around over there in the corner. So as you can see, I have my parents are both here. Huge supports. Obviously, there's much more family involved, but my parents are huge supports for us, and we can't do what we do as parents, and professionally and personally, all of us support you guys. So if you guys know us, my dad's retired from his, so it's a cool thing to be following those footsteps, and have an opportunity to hopefully be proud. So thank you for that. It's not as graceful as Andy did, but just for the fire department, we are working the best job in a really great place. I don't think that the residents here even understand how good of a group we have. I think that they are more fortunate than they realize. And it's not, a knock on you guys, it's more a compliment to the group that we have, top to bottom. We are a super solid group that really do a great job at everything. I'm really proud to be a part of it. I'm proud to be in the position that I am. I hope that I did you guys just as well as you expected to. So thank you for everything that you've done, to the chiefs and the guys that have been mentors to me, and everything that you guys have done to show me what leadership is and what it's like to be a part of a place that you can make a difference, but it's never bigger than that one person making a little bit of effort to try and help out. So thank you so much for everything you've done with that. I really appreciate it.
Picture out, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, you want me down there? Okay.
Maybe between two of them?
Stand up.
Should we get in the middle?
Yeah, about in the middle.
You've done this before. I know I'm out of practice, I don't have a firehouse.
If you could move down one more person here to the center. A little bit more there, there.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you again for accommodating us with this. It's great to share this moment with you and the public. So if you don't have any objections, we're going to head back to the station and have a cake for these two gentlemen.
Be our guests. And what our two new battalion chiefs said about their team is absolutely true. And from where I sit, I get an opportunity to spend a fair amount of time with both our police and fire departments, and they are absolutely consummate professionals and do a great job, and frankly confront a great deal more danger than most people in Lake Forest would ever think. And it's not easy, and it's, you know, going from, you know, talking an inebriated teenager off of a roof to, you know, a nasty car accident on 41 in sometimes a half an hour. And it's a tough, tough job, and they do a great job, so. Next item on the agenda is the Lake Forest Day proclamation. Whereas the McKinlock Post 264 of the American Legion has undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in celebration of Lake Forest Day on Wednesday, August 3, 2022, with a view to bringing together the people of our city in the furtherance of civic interest and advancement of community fellowship. And whereas the McKinlock Post 264 of the American Legion honors Lake Forest residents, employees, neighbors, and friends by saluting, quote, "those who made the ultimate sacrifice during all conflicts and wars," close quote, "as this year's Lake Forest Day theme." Now therefore be hereby proclaimed that said Lake Forest Day celebration is declared to be a city fair, and in pursuance thereof, and Tuesday, August 2, 2022, and Wednesday, August 3, 2022, shall be observed as a holiday in the city of Lake Forest, and our people are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits, gather in West Park in a spirit of comradeship and goodwill in support of the ideals of our city. Will Dave Lipinski please step forward?
You could both come.
Tom Marks.
Nice to see you.
Tom.
Nice to see you. Put a photo out.
Good evening. I'm Tom Marks. The Legion's been doing this for, I think, 102 years. We always look forward to it. It's a fair amount of work, but it's something that this city really likes, and we love doing it for the city. And we couldn't do it without the city. It's a partnership that has been just spectacular over the years, whether it's the police, the firemen, or all the rest of the staff. And all we need now is good weather, and there's a meeting going on right now. The planning for Lake Forest Day really starts normally in January, and there's a meeting going on right now, and we'll know how much the burgers will cost this year. So thanks much.
I would entertain a motion to approve the Lake Forest Day proclamation. At least. Oops. Well, I took care of that. It's a good thing we didn't have that on the mic. Should we hold on? Okay. Okay, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Lake Forest Day will be August 2 and 3. The next item on the agenda is election and appointment of city officers. Election by the city council and appointment by the mayor as required by the Charter of Lake Forest and the city code. The officer positions are as follows. City Supervisor Jason Wishe, City Treasurer Elizabeth Hollob, City Clerk Margaret Boyer, City Marshal and Collector Carl Waldorf, City Attorney Julie Tappendorf, City Surveyor and Engineer Gaywald Hamilton Associates. I would entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointments.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of city council. Good evening. In light of having several esteemed guests here from the American Legion Post, I thought this would be an opportune time for staff to provide an update to the I thought this would be an opportune time for staff to provide a update to the council and to the public on the status of the Veterans Park Improvement Project. So I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent of Parks and Forestry Chuck Myers. He'll provide an update and a bit of a timeline moving forward, and then I will invite Tom and Dave back up to give an update as well, specific to the War Monument Project that they're partnering with the city on, and maybe give a status of the fundraising campaign that's underway. So with that, Chuck?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. So I am gonna give you an update on the construction out there. I'm sure that most of you are tired of looking at that, the fence out there. We have had a tough construction season to date this year. It's contrary to what the weather's been like the last few weeks. It has been a very rainy season for our contractor to get going, but they are back at it, and we are excited to get this park back online. So I just have a couple photos that I wanna show you, just so you see what's happening. But right now, to date, mostly what's happened has been underground. A lot of the drainage, things like that, that you wouldn't see. The grading you've all noticed, you can see that the view into the park is much different now. But they are now switching gears to the concrete walls. So, as you see in the front, the brick, underneath that is concrete, of course. So, there is a piece in the front, a planting piece, that will be the center right as you come into the park, or as you're coming up to the intersection. That was poured this morning, and tomorrow the rest of the concrete will be poured. So once that's done, they'll switch gears, and they'll have a masonry team out there that will be laying brick. There's brick that's going in the path. That's what you're seeing back by the construction fence there. It's all been graded, and they'll be forming for the path. There's just minor changes to the path system to allow for a memorial, which we'll be talking about in a moment. So, this is just what it looks like behind the scenes. All the forms are still up, and they'll be there for a couple days yet, and then they'll switch gears and start doing the brick. So, I thought I had another one. But with that, the landscaping will be starting. That is going to be when you start seeing things look really nice out there. All the plant material has been sourced. The landscape company has to wait for all the brick work to be done, so that they can come in and finish up their work. So, the big question I know is, when will it be open? I wish I could tell you by Memorial Day, that was the original intent. However, that's not going to happen. We anticipate it being done later in June. So hopefully, we can get the gates down, we'll take the fence down as soon as possible, so that people can come back into the park. And I think people are gonna like the changes. It has a complete renovation, so no new structures or anything like that until the memorial comes in. But right now, it's a lot of landscaping, new brick work, and kind of a more open look to the front. So, we're looking forward to opening that up as soon as possible. With that, I think Tom's gonna come up and talk a little bit about the memorial that's being built for this park. I will say that that is probably a good year out, so just to finish the timing on this, there's a long way to go on that. We're planning to open the park fully, and then the spot that the memorial goes on will just be grass most likely for the year. So with that, Tom?
Yes. Credit. Picture worth a thousand words.
All right, the picture there is not real large. I'm sure everybody here is familiar with the location. In the upper left is what the monument will look like from the front. That is a piece of polished black granite. There are only two places in the world that will have it, and India is where our stone is going to come from. As you look at the bottom, that's the back of the monument. It's an optical illusion. The slanted pieces of metal there that are white are actually attached to the back of the granite. It's not a teepee kind of a thing, it's directly attached. The stone will be eight feet tall, one foot thick, and 15 feet long. So, it says in big print today, 350,000 is the goal. Unsurprisingly, it looks like we're gonna have a little bit of an overrun, so we'll be a little bit past that number. The quiet time of the fundraising has begun. The stone has been ordered, the design is sort of under review. The HBC will be looking at it, and I don't know who else, but maybe Kathy will tell me somebody else later. But it's almost, we're almost ready to be done with that phase of it. So we've been talking to people about the fundraising, and people have been very generous. We have a long way to go, but the public timing for the outreach is really upon us. Websites and public notice will start to happen, you'll start to see more about it. I'm very pleased that the park is gonna get opened, because then people will start to look and see what's there. And we think it's gonna be another year before that stone is in place. Once it gets here, there's not too much to do to it, but the trick is to get it all the way from India. So that's what's going on. I'm glad to answer any questions that I can.
Alderman Bushman. Hooray.
I'm wondering if you'd be able to have some sort of picture in the park, once the park opens in June, have a picture of what you intended to have a display there. I think that would be very exciting and a nice touch, if you can do that.
I'll take that and take it back to the meeting, and I think that's a great idea. We were also thinking maybe we'd have some sort of a thermometer as we raise the funds towards the ultimate goal, if it's allowed. We'll see if it's allowed, but maybe it is. Yeah, Jim?
Hey, Tom, thanks for your service first and foremost. And if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit about the artist and his background and just how he produced this?
Yeah, I'm not the right guy for that. I didn't know I was gonna get behind the mic tonight, or I would've been prepared. Neil Lynch is our commander, and he's been more involved. And Ed Garrity's leading the Lake Forest Day meeting over at the Legion Hall right now. The name is gonna escape me, but it's the...
Excuse me, it's right on the screen here.
If you can read that, yeah, please.
Yeah, it's Gary Tilery. It says he's a 30-year actual resident of Lake Forest. So I was just kinda curious, he was in our community, and he's from here, and he served in Vietnam.
Yeah, the folks that are, the studio is over in Fort Sheridan, so they're right here. The people that are doing this did the Michael Jordan statue out in front of the United Center, and they've done a lot of big projects. This is probably one of the smaller things that they've been involved with. But well-known nationally, we're happy to have them, and we're very happy to use a local fellow. But I'm sorry, I wasn't prepped, I didn't know I was gonna be up front.
No, that's great, thanks, that was all I was looking for, thank you so much.
Yes.
I actually was gonna ask the same thing, Jim. I think, and Dana's here, maybe we could think about doing something for Memorial Day weekend on the sculpture, and maybe the artist, of course, and also something about those who have been killed in action since World War II, who are residents of Lake Forest.
Well, the names will be on a plaque on the back of the monument. If you look at the bottom picture there, the dark rectangle is going to be where those are. And we think, so far we've uncovered 31 names. Three from World War I, many more from World War II, and three from Korea and Vietnam and Gulf War. So, those people will be identified on the monument. In that the park isn't gonna be ready to be opened for this Memorial Day, there will be events in the future. We've talked about Fourth of July, and it's really a function when that stone gets here and when we can get done and have a real celebration. When that time comes, we will absolutely be doing something in the park to let people know about it and have them see what we've created. I'm really pleased, because the location of this, I mean, we all know the history of that piece of turf. For anybody here that's new, that hasn't asked some old timers, you'll get the speech. But when you get to the corner of Deer Path and Green Bay, if you are stopped at that red light, this whole thing is gonna open up to your view, because the way the landscaping has been moved a little bit, I think it's gonna be something that people will be very aware of as they come into our city. So, thank you all for your time. I'm findable, and the Legion is findable. If you call the Legion and leave a message with a question, Ed Garrity or Neil Lynch or myself will get back pretty quickly and answer any questions you might have. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you to Chuck. And I'll just say, you know, on behalf of the city, how pleased we are to partner with the Legion on this, both for, you know, the project and what it means for recognizing past Lake Forest residents who have served their country, and as Tom alluded to, who gave the ultimate sacrifice. But the project itself is really, you know, just the next in a very long line of successful public-private partnerships. That is really a hallmark of our community, and people who give back for, again, a lot of these park or other public improvements. And so really pleased, again, with the partnership that we've had with the Legion, and look forward to the project being completed next year. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. And I wanna make a quick comment first. We have a topic on our agenda later in the evening, and I've got a number of forums filled out here, they're at the back of the room, for people that would like to speak. And if you are planning to speak about the Woodlands project later on, please fill out a card and bring it up to the table, or pass it up to the table, so that we'll note a call on you. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, this is Alderman Rommel, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Loud and clear.
Well, that's better than I can say from this end. I am sorry that I can't be at the meeting tonight, but illness prevents me from being there. Just for the record, I have been on the meeting since the roll call, so I am here at home, but there in spirit, and I will try and participate as best as I can. There's a bit of a delay, so it's not going to be the smoothest running operation in the world, but thank you for giving me this opportunity to participate. I appreciate the council's patience, and thanks to the staff for trying to make this possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. We don't have any committee reports tonight, so we'll move on to items for omnibus vote consider... Yes, sir. Oh, did we have a public, a member of the public that wanted to speak? On it, not...
I had turned it in a paper, so I'm not sure where it went.
Well, if you were gonna, if you were gonna speak on the Woodlands?
No.
No? Okay, well then, or on some other non-agenda item? Sorry. My apologies.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Endress. I am the Community Plans Liaison Officer for Naval Station Great Lakes. I'm here representing Captain Jason Williamson. He is the current commanding officer of the base, and we send, he sends his greetings and well wishes to the city and the community of Lake Forest. I have recently assumed this position, and I have been visiting various communities in the area of Lake County surrounding the base, and wanted to give the opportunity to introduce myself as a representative of the base. And if there was any questions or interface with your city and the base, I am one of those options to do that. Obviously, the mayor and others could go directly to the commanding officer, but I'm the back door, and sometimes hopefully get an answer quicker. But just wanted to give you a feel that the Navy this year will be training and graduating weekly from our Navy boot camp, 37,000 recruits. Citizens that have raised their hand and made a commitment to the Navy. And 48 weeks out of the year, we graduate anywhere from 600 to 1,200 recruits. And they either train at Great Lakes further, or they go on to go to the fleet, aviation, submarines, surface ships, and service our country, providing the security for our nation, and then, and, excuse me, and the services for our people. Wanted to thank you as a community for providing homes and services to our military people, the guests that come to Great Lakes, as well as the retirees, many of them that do end up living here in Lake Forest. I will pass on to Jason my calling card and a little couple bits of information. One of the items that are coming up recently, that is Congressman Schneider will be at the Industry Days here in Lake Forest at the Hilton Garden Inn later this month. So, I appreciate the time that you gave me, and enjoy sitting in and seeing what your community has to offer to yourselves. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Before you leave, I'm not sure that there, that everybody understands exactly what Great Lakes Naval Training Center is. Some of us do, but I think we have a lot of new residents in Lake Forest, about 1,100 new households in the last two years. I wouldn't be surprised if some of them don't even know that it's there. So if you could maybe give us a one-minute overview of what all Great Lakes Naval Training Center is to this country and to the Navy, it'd be very helpful.
Thank you, sir. Great Lakes is the only boot camp for the Navy. The process, as they said, 37,000 this year of recruits going through. We have put through over 4 billion, million, excuse me, 4 million recruits since World War II. And right now, our population fluctuates over the year, but anywhere from 18,000 to 26,000 people are at Naval Station Great Lakes at any one time. Graduates come from all over the world. I've gone to recruit graduations, and it's very interesting when the recruits go by and acknowledge the states they're from, or their territories. And it's amazing how many people from Somalia walk across that parade field, being, coming sailors of their Navy. Great Lakes has been around since 1911, so we are now in that, over that century mark, and has been producing sailors all that time, World War II, Vietnam, World War II, obviously, and Korea. Anything else specifically, Mayor, that you might want to...
No, that's very helpful, thank you. And thank you for your service, thank you for being a good neighbor, and it's great to have an open line of communication, so. Thank you.
Jason, can you put, when you get this card, put it in the minutes, so if we wanna get in touch with them, we know how to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, and pardon me for not recognizing you appropriately. Okay, so, now, items for omnibus vote consideration. We have four tonight, so that's about 10 less than normal, so this is good. The first is approval of the May 2nd, 2022 city council meeting minutes. The second is approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of the Croya Youth Executive Committee, and I will read their names off, just so that everybody knows who they are. They are Jacqueline Rubin, Nick Weinbrenner, B. Pierce, Chloe Robb, Matt Durberg, Abby Hanlon, Bryn Hippel, Pride Hagerty, Tommy Hetler, Gigi Snellbach, Scott Weston, Sasha Robb, Louise Brickman, Zoe Frentas... Robb, Louise Brickman, Zoe Frentas, I'm sorry, Frances, Luca Ferrioli, Nick Slover, Robert Medica, Claire Yaley, Ben Weinbrenner, Georgia Manorino, Sophia Falls, and Sophie Delhi. These are all the student officers of Croya who are graduating, I guess this weekend? Next weekend? And moving on, and they'll be replaced with another group of Croya officers next year. Third item is approval of revisions to the city investment policy. And fourth is consideration of an ordinance amending the City of Lake Forest City Code regarding the Class C-2 and Class C-3 liquor licenses. Final reading and, if appropriate, final approval. Is there an item that any member of the council would like removed or taken separately? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the omnibus items?
So moved.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Alderman Rommel?
Melanie?
Aye.
Alderman notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarius?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is new business. Excuse me. We have, let's see, we have one item of new business tonight. That is consideration of a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals in support of an amendment to the special use permit for Woodlands Academy of the Sacred Heart, located at 760 East Wesley Road. First reading of an ordinance, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Kathy Cerniak, City Director of Development, will make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you noted, this petition comes to you from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, I would like to probably take a few more minutes than I usually do, but provide you with an overview, talk about the property location, the current conditions, just a bit of history. I know you had a lot of information in your packet. I know you had the complete zoning board packets, both from March and April, in your drop box. But I do want to just quickly review the process to date, and then talk about the ZBA areas of focus, their conclusions, and then highlight their recommendations, which include conditions, requirements, and limitations. So, an overview, just to orient everyone. The Woodlands campus today is approximately 40 acres. It's located in southeast Lake Forest, adjacent to the Northmore neighborhood, Sheridan Road, Wesley Road, and it's surrounded by residential development on all sides. Until 2013, 2012, this parcel was actually two parcels, and you can see by the jagged parcel line, this was the former Barra Campus, and this was Woodlands Academy. But importantly, in 1901, the entire site was acquired by the Religious of the Sacred Heart. In 1904, the Old Main Building, which was generally located in this area here, I'm sure many of you remember, the Old Main Building, that was completed in 1904, and at that time, the Academy of the Sacred Heart moved from Chicago to Lake Forest. In 1961, Woodlands Academy moved from the Old Main Building onto a separate campus, part of the original 40 acres, and that's when Woodlands Academy, generally in the configuration that exists today, was established. In 1961, there was no requirement at that time in the city code for a special use permit for non-residential uses in residential zoning districts. Many of our churches, our private clubs, our schools, Lake Forest College, the academy, all were established prior to a requirement in the code for a special use permit. So, in virtually every case, we've gone back later, concurrent with some modifications proposed on the various campuses or buildings, and recognized the pre-existing use through a special use permit. And that's exactly what happened in 1998. The first special use permit recognizing Woodlands was issued, was approved, and at that time, there were some modifications to the school. I believe at that time, approximately 8,000 square feet was added to the front of Woodlands Academy at that time. There were later amendments, 2011, there was the addition of the Science Building. There were some other aspects, including a performing arts center on the master plan approved in 2011 that were never constructed. In 2012, a pretty significant change, many of you know that Barra Campus was not successful. DePaul stepped in for a while. There was a residential proposal for Barra Campus, but a donor stepped forward, and because of the generosity of that donor, the original campus was able to be reunited. That occurred in 2012. That special use permit also dealt with providing a location for the telecommunications facilities that were previously located on Old Main. In 2013, an updated master plan for the newly combined campus was approved. And that master plan is what governs the campus today, again, adopted in 2013. Master plans take many different forms. This master plan was, is somewhat conceptual, but even in that conceptual form, as we look at the northeast portion of the property, you do see the tennis courts that were recognized by that 2013 special use permit and the parking area here behind the gymnasium. And importantly, as we look back at air photos, I believe the earliest one we had in the zoning board packet was from the 1970s, and it was visible in that early air photo that the tennis courts and a bit of a haphazard parking area was located in this area. Again, just to orient you, looking at an air photo of the campus as it exists today, the red outline combines the entire 40-acre site, and you will notice that this site really is encumbered. There's a ravine that moves through the property from northwest to southeast, and there's a ravine that also crosses the property in this location. There's also a wooded area, and there's pretty serious grade change across the property. Many of, some of you may remember that when the Barra Woods residential development was considered, this ravine here was actually going to be filled in, which is something Lake Forest hasn't done in decades. So, again, through a generous donor, that project did not move forward, and the original site was recombined. Existing conditions, looking a little bit closer at that northeast corner of the, of Woodlands campus today, two tennis courts exist, very close to the property line of the homes that are on the south side of Highview Terrace. And again, the parking area that clearly is shown in the master plan and in early air photos, again, is a bit haphazard. There really is no provision for vehicles to turn around. As shuttle buses move into this area, there is almost a three-point turn type of maneuver that needs to occur. This area of campus, through the years, really hasn't received the attention that some other areas of the campus has. And at this point, Woodlands has come forward with the intent to address some issues, but also make some improvements in this area. The review process to date, Woodlands Academy staff and board, it's my understanding that this project has been under consideration for at least two years. There were early meetings with city staff as this concept came together. As staff is charged with doing, we challenged the Woodlands staff and members of the board to explore options, to explain things more clearly, again, part of our normal process. Woodlands Academy did communicate with the neighbors. There was one drop-in session held and some direct communications, some direct one-on-one communications with various neighbors. In March of this year, the Zoning Board of Appeals opened its public hearing on this matter. And over the course of two meetings, in March and April, over the course of more than seven hours, the board did their job. They asked a lot of questions, they presented challenges, they explored options, and at the conclusion of their April meeting, the board did vote five to two to recommend approval of Woodlands Academy's petition, subject to a number of conditions of approval. The board focused on a number of things throughout their discussion, and I don't mean to represent that this was everything they focused on, but they asked Woodlands Academy about the impetus for the proposed changes. And Woodlands responded that stormwater is a problem in that area. In fact, their gymnasium, which is located in that area, floods regularly. If you did go visit the site, and several, I believe all of the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals did, they observed the sandbags that are in place to protect the gymnasium from flooding. In fact, all of the water from the Northmore neighborhood, as does everything, moves to the east, moves into the ravines, and moves on to the lake. So, Woodlands accepts stormwater from much of the Northmore neighborhood. The Zoning Board of Appeals asked about the location and number of tennis courts. At the first meeting, Woodlands presented a number of alternative locations that were considered for the tennis courts. The zoning board sent them back at the end of that meeting and said, "Look at these a little bit more in depth, consider other options," and the zoning board offered some other options. The zoning board also challenged Woodlands Academy to reconsider whether five courts were needed, or whether three or four might work instead. At the same time, the zoning board recognized that although it's their role to present challenges, ask questions, ask for additional information, that it also was their role to act upon a final plan that was presented to them. The zoning board discussed the vehicle turnaround location and asked, as part of that discussion at the end of the March meeting, whether that turnaround could be shifted closer to the gymnasium. In order to make the appropriate stormwater management improvements, an overland flow route needs to maneuver or be routed between the corner of the gymnasium and the tennis courts. So, shifting that vehicle turnaround closer to the tennis, closer to the gymnasium was not found to be workable. The zoning board asked about traffic volumes, and at the April meeting, it was discussed in detail the fact that the varsity tennis team currently rents for a dollar a year, I believe. I did speak with Sally Swarthod, our Director of Parks and Recreation, the four tennis courts at Waveland. The varsity team uses all four of those tennis courts, and they must travel by shuttle bus from, or by their own cars, from Woodlands Academy to Waveland Park and then back. As the zoning board discussed it, they recognized that the junior varsity team already comes to campus for their matches, so in effect, there really wouldn't be a significant increase in traffic, if any at all. The Zoning Board of Appeals talked about enhancing the screening along that property line that is shared between Woodlands Academy and the properties on the south side of Highview Terrace. The zoning board recognized that what's there today is really nothing of substance. It's a fence that, it's uncertain whose fence it is. The fence is maybe in several ownerships, CalMed may have a role, but the landscaping in that area is primarily buckthorn and non-native vegetation that frankly isn't in very good condition. So, the zoning board saw this as an opportunity to put some requirements in place to assure that over time, that buffer is really enhanced and made to look like some of the other buffers we have in the community. The zoning board also talked about activity levels. They received detailed information from Woodlands Academy about physical education classes from the academy that use the tennis courts seasonally. They received information about the tennis teams that use the courts for several months, I believe it's August to October, for practice after school and then for matches. Importantly, five tennis courts will not allow Woodlands to host regional tournaments, but only matches where they play against one school. And the zoning board focused on what can they do to improve upon the conditions that exist today and reduce the impact on the neighbors, recognizing that there is an adjacency of a non-residential use that has existed for decades and an adjacent single-family residential neighborhood. The proposed site plan, and again, we're in that northwest corner of the property, pulls the existing two tennis courts, which are virtually right on the property, 25 feet away from the property line, and adds three courts. A total of five tennis courts are proposed, again, which will be used for PE classes, for tennis, Woodlands tennis team practice and matches. And Woodlands, in the past, has had some youth camps, so it's possible there would be summer youth tennis camps. In addition, Woodlands Academy would on occasion use this for some type of a Woodlands-sponsored event that would include alumni, staff, students, faculty. This currently haphazard parking area would be configured, and in the conditions, this area is limited to 22 spaces, and this area provides a turnaround, which although it takes up some of the space that is currently just open, haphazard parking, it does provide a way for vehicles to move through this area in an organized fashion to minimize any backup, beeping, or congestion. The zoning board also recommended the removal of these three parking spaces, which are located closest to the property line, not only to provide some additional area for landscaping, but importantly, to assure that congestion doesn't occur in this area, in this driveway that is right along the property line. Looking at this a little bit closer, and you may be able to note the distances on your screen, at the closest point, this traffic circle is 10 feet from the property lines, and again, the tennis courts are 25 feet, and this driveway is generally in its existing location, about 20 feet from the property line. After the over seven hours of discussion and two meetings, hearing responses to their questions, hearing a significant amount of public testimony, reviewing written testimony, the zoning board, the majority of the zoning board came to several conclusions, that this project, this request, provides the opportunity to improve upon an existing situation, to add perimeter screening, to address stormwater issues, which are a health and safety issue for Woodlands Academy, to organize the parking lot, which again, is a bit chaotic in how it's used, to provide a vehicle turnaround as opposed to a dead end that requires maneuvering of vehicles behind these homes. They recognize that it provided an opportunity, although lighting isn't part of this proposed plan, the zoning board did push Woodlands Academy to include in this plan updating the lighting that's currently on the north-facing wall of the gymnasium, which is outdated lighting, to really shield that lighting, direct it downward, and to address perhaps the lighting color and lighting temperature. The Zoning Board of Appeals felt that by putting some use parameters in place, which are not in place now, could help to mitigate impacts on the neighbors. The zoning board concluded that alternatives were appropriately considered. They spent a fair amount of time asking questions about those alternatives, again, recognizing that they were obligated to act on the plan in front of them, but the majority of the zoning board felt confident that proper due diligence was done. The zoning board felt that it was reasonable to allow the school to enhance its facilities and recognize that Woodlands Academy, as are all of our special uses, really add to the distinctiveness of the community, the character of the community, and this community values its institutions. And again, they recognized that Woodlands was a long-established use and a part of the Lake Forest community. The zoning board, in its five-to-two recommendation to you, did include a number of conditions. Those are included on pages 53, 54, and 55 of your Those are included on pages 53, 54, and 55 of your packet as part of the ordinance. The zoning board required that a solid fence, that Woodlands erect a solid fence along the property line. The zoning board required a minimum height of six feet. Woodlands Academy has agreed to construct, to install a fence of seven feet, which is the maximum allowed by the code. The conditions require a landscape buffer, a layered buffer that really serves to replace some of the buckthorn within that 25-foot area between the tennis courts and the property line, and importantly, requires monitoring of that, of the new landscaping for a three-year period, as we would do with a subdivision. So city staff would be required to inspect the landscaping twice a year over that three-year period, require landscaping that is failing to thrive to be replaced, and to identify if there's gaps in the landscaping that would need to be infilled. I do want to jump just a moment. And Alderman Rumel, if you're with us, Alderman Rumel, in a recent conversation, noted that we do have some really good examples of screening, and Alderman Rumel played a role in this. This is the landscaping on Long Meadow near Open Lands Nature Center, the former Armour Gatehouse on the southwest corner of Waukegan and Deer Path. This is looking, approaching it from the east, and these other two are actually looking at it from, approaching from the west. And this is, this is actually an area that is much narrower than 25 feet, Lake Forest Open Lands building, and in fact, there were, there's tents on the Open Lands property today which are not visible from the road. The other conditions, parking, as I noted, a maximum of 22 spaces. The surface must be paved, and currently it is gravel, so reducing the noise and the dust will be achieved. That shuttle buses, small and medium size would be permitted, but not regular full-size buses. Those would need to drop off and pick up at the front of the school. Woodlands Academy personnel only would be able to access the area, the parking area, the turnaround after 9:30 PM, and the condition requires that the driveway be signed to note that that access is limited. And Woodlands Academy will be required to institute a no-idling policy in this area. Woodlands Academy did say that they intend to institute it throughout their campus. Use limitations, the tennis courts are limited to racket sports, Woodlands Academy students and youth camps, Woodlands Academy, use by Woodlands Academy physical education classes, and on a limited basis, Woodlands Academy-sponsored events for students, parents, faculty, staff, alumni. Importantly, the zoning board confirmed that the tennis courts could not be rented out for private events that are not sport court-related, that are not for sport court-related activities. The tennis courts are only permitted to be used during daylight hours. No lights are permitted. No permanent seating is permitted on the north side of the courts, and no loudspeakers are permitted, whether installed or freestanding. Council action. As always, the council has options. You can accept the recommendations of the Zoning Board of Appeals, approve the ordinance, which is on page 52, I believe it starts in your packet, subject to the conditions of approval. You can reject the recommendation of the Zoning Board of Appeals, or if you find that the Zoning Board of Appeals failed to properly address the criteria, properly do their job, you have the option of remanding it back to the Zoning Board of Appeals. With that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, for questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions from the council? Alderman Harris?
Hi, Kathy, thank you. Are you okay? You're true, okay. Could you, the illustration of the proposed five courts does not indicate that it is going to be constructed for use other than tennis. But then you said racket sports. So I'm wondering, is it going to be used exclusively for tennis, or is there an intention to use it for other racket sports?
As you may know, pickleball is gaining popularity, so it's reasonable that Woodlands Academy may want the opportunity, as trends change, to use it for other racket sports. So yes, that is the intention.
So it'll be drawn for pickleball? The lines for pickleball will be incorporated into?
I can't speak to that specifically. These are primarily tennis courts, but I believe Woodlands Academy wanted some flexibility to allow other racket sports.
Okay. And the layered landscaping that you showed us, images of those, you said that that's narrower than the 25 feet that exists between the property line and where the tennis courts would begin, but those look like very mature trees. I'm just wondering if that's sort of an accurate illustration, or do you think that the landscaping would look much different?
This is an accurate, this is a photo of the area just to the northwest of the corner of the Open Lands building.
After how many years after it was installed, is what I'm wondering?
Well, today, it's a number of years, but I can remember being at that facility with my children when they were in school, and these were fairly fast-growing evergreens. I think my, the point with this is that, working together with Woodlands, their landscape architect, our city arborist, there is a way to layer plantings, low-level, mid-level, evergreen deciduous, but this, again, as Alderman Rumel pointed out, this is an example of something that was done very successfully in a small area, and it totally shields the building today and any activities that are occurring behind that building.
Okay. And with respect to, I understand that there would be camp activity for the summer. What about renting, you know, to professionals or, you know, outside organizations to utilize this facility? Was that also a restricted condition from the zoning board?
All of that was discussed, not unlike other institutions, Lake Forest College, Lake Forest Academy. Woodlands does have youth camps in the summer, which are during daylight hours. The gymnasium throughout the year is rented to, rented to other youth sports leagues for basketball, for instance. So there is and always has been that type of activity, but it is limited to sports. The gymnasium, the courts, the tennis courts, would not be permitted to be rented out, you know, Elway-style for some type of a private event or private party. That is not Woodlands intention, that is not permitted by the conditions of the special use permit.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Rumel?
Melanie, are you there? I think she's there. Melanie?
I am here. Were you asking if I had a question?
Yes.
What happened to your comments? Yeah.
I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
First of all, I think that the zoning board has done a tremendous job looking at this, and Woodlands has been very accommodating in so many aspects, and I think the seven-foot fence idea was mine even today, and I appreciate incorporating that. The only question that I have has to do with the sports camps, and I know that some neighbors have said that they can be there from sunup to sundown in the summer, and I just wondered if the zoning board gave any consideration to saying, you know, eight to six, or eight to 5:30 for those youth camps, so that the residents along Highview can enjoy their backyards in the evening uninterrupted. It seems to me that a lot of youth camps don't go that late in the evening anyway, and so I don't know that it's a huge concession, and I hope I can hear your response.
The zoning board did ask Woodlands about the timing for the youth camps, and Woodlands representatives did respond that youth camps, again, as occur throughout the community, normally end at three, or four, or five. My sense is the zoning board didn't want to be overly restrictive or overly specific in the event there was perhaps an activity at the end of camp that went till 6:30 instead of 5:30. So I, my sense was the zoning board really was convinced that Woodlands would responsibly operate the youth camp. Woodlands did offer and make a commitment to lock the tennis courts when they are not authorized for use by Woodlands Academy.
Did you hear that?
Thank you. And I also just wanted to clarify, I think in the packet, there was sort of a question about the buckthorn, whether it would in fact be removed, or whether that was the option of the petitioner. Just, can you clarify that, please?
The discussion about buckthorn acknowledged that the buckthorn currently provides significant screening. In fact, our city arborist noted that when he went out there. So that was an option. I believe that over time, it's Woodlands' intention to remove that buckthorn, as is really happening throughout the community. May not happen all at once, but my sense is that the, that Woodlands Academy really is working towards sustainable initiatives on several fronts, and that is one of them. But there was no requirement that the buckthorn must remove, must be removed within a certain timeframe, but instead, a requirement that if it is removed before it's removed, that we together, the city and Woodlands, work together to assure that there's a landscape plan that provides that layering, and ultimately, will provide a much more significant and healthier buffer than exists today.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, those pictures of, you know, aren't any good unless you put those plantings in, right? I mean, you know, the pictures of the nature center at Lake Forest Open Lands. So I, you know, certainly would encourage them to move forward with those plantings as soon as they can, because they'll grow to a height also, which will provide some more screening for the neighbors over time. So thank you again for allowing me to take part in this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I have one comment. I can't imagine spending all that money to put in a really nice, multi-layered landscape buffer and leave the buckthorn there. That doesn't make any sense. So if they have to put in the buffer, they're not going to be able to keep the buckthorn there, you know, and it really doesn't make sense.
It'll be an incremental process. The landscaping of the entire length may not all occur at once, so some buckthorn may remain and, as they incrementally install landscaping. Again, consistent with conditions we put in place for other types of special uses.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions from the council, I would open up for public comment. The first person on the list here is Paul Hayman.
Yes.
Next person on the list is Carrie Johnston.
Carrie.
Carrie?
Carrie.
Oh, you got some more? Okay.
I wish I wasn't the first, because I'm stunned with what I've heard. Am I allowed to use that screen?
Uh, no.
No, okay. I guess one of my first questions to the council people is, did you get, I submitted a letter from my daughter's physician, and I was going to speak about the differences in all the courts that are around, such as the academy and Waveland and the high school and all that, because it's amazing how many courts they're proposing for such a small school, 122 children are there, girls. And it gets revealed later on that in fact, they're renting out the property, that's how it gets justified, but it's at our expense. And I can tell you, after listening to all this and Kathy's dissertation, I am really angry now. I am not for this, and what I can't show you, but there was the letter that I provided, my daughter was in a horrible car accident in 2016, had many orthopedic fractures. She, the worst of her injuries was a traumatic brain injury. She was down, she was air-vac'd from Stanford after two months to RIC in Chicago, which is Rehabilitation Institute of Chicago, and they are the top brain injury-trauma facility in the world. So she spent many months in-house, and then was part of their program outside of that for a couple of years. She is still recovering, and her neurosurgeon speaks to this. This whole project will not be good for her continued rehabilitation. We moved there because it was quiet, it was peaceful, it was a comfortable neighborhood that she could manage, very, very friendly people, and this is just beyond egregious in my mind. I am very disgusted by it, because this doesn't need to happen in this location. They have got plenty of property, it can all go forward to the west and be contained like a sports corridor with parking that exists, and leave the peaceful neighborhood, which was not really calculated, listening to Kathy tonight. I mean, I heard, you know, where's the flexibility for us? I don't see any. Working with your neighbors, Woodlands has not worked with us. We had one little get-together and that's it. Nobody has called any of us and also asked us what we think about screening, or what we think about the layout, or how many courts, nothing. And there seems to be a big bias here, and I think it's very unsettling considering none of you live in Northmore, specifically on Highview Terrace. So how can you dictate to us what's good for us? It has, you just soon have us disappear, and it's really obnoxious and disturbing that we are so diminished by this whole plan when you have other locations, easily. And I don't think the school needs five courts. I think the fifth court is a red herring, because if they have four courts, they fit in all the other locations. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Carol Sorenson.
I live on Highview Terrace, and I am very concerned about Woodlands' proposal of building five tennis courts. First and primary is the nuisance factor, specifically noise and proximity. Using five courts at the same time amounts to 10 or 20 people running and grunting essentially in the neighbors' backyards for a good part of the school day. Also, they expect to have IHSA matches on their home courts. Where are the spectators to be located, and how much noise and traffic will that generate? The proposed courts are too close to the backyards. If you could come and see the marker for the proposed courts, it looks like you could reach out and shake hands. The proposal states a 25-foot setback from the neighbors' properties. This is only about the length of one and a half parking spaces. It would be like having a Jumbotron in your backyard set on sports going all day that you couldn't turn off. This would definitely destroy the quiet enjoyment of one's property. The landscape buffer would have to be much higher and deeper than what The landscape buffer would have to be much higher and deeper than what is proposed. The existing so-called sparse buffer is actually quite a substantial thicket of good-sized trees and bushes. Replacing them with the proposed small evergreens bushes, which not like the open lands buffer that was shown, would be woefully inadequate to buffer the noise and the view. It would be like having noisy neighbors having a party in your backyard all the time. Improved parking sounds nice, except that more parking equals more cars, more traffic, and more people all going up and down too close to the neighbors' backyards. The second issue is property values. There would be an inevitable property value decline in that some buyers may simply not offer on a house with tennis courts in the backyard. And if they do, they may offer a lower price. It's highly inappropriate that Woodlands Academy, which pays no property taxes, should impair the enjoyment and value of properties for which homeowners pay a premium price and substantial property taxes. Woodlands Academy has about 120 students. They don't need five tennis courts for that number of students, and they certainly don't need them all in a row. They have alternate sites for the courts on their property. The homeowners have no alternative. Woodlands has admitted they intend to rent out the multi-use courts for revenue. This would also increase the usage of the courts and the nuisance to the homeowners. So again, it is highly inappropriate for Woodlands to impinge on the homeowner's enjoyment and value of their property to install structures to produce revenue that Woodlands does not pay taxes on. So I urge you to seriously consider these objections to the expansion of the tennis courts at Woodlands Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Marlena Parr. And Ms. Parr will be followed by Ralph Elward.
Okay. I live at 711 Highview Terrace, and the highway is right, or the road that goes to the turnaround is right behind my house. And it's, according to their flags, they are moving closer to our property line than what it is now. So, and it's a one-way street, so it's really not going to help traffic flow in anything except turning around because they still have to wait to go back and forth each direction. So I think we residents of Highview Terrace have all made it quite clear that this backyard project cannot meet the requirements of City Code 159.045. They have been busing students to ten other tennis courts and have not been using their tennis courts for tennis in the last few years. So there will definitely be a substantial increase in traffic, noise, and pollution if five courts are installed. And after construction is completed, when they start renting out the courts to outside organizations every day, could bring in 50 to 100 spectators or more, and participants from other areas are not appreciative of our quiet way of life in this neighborhood. I've had blaring, trucks blaring music all over, waking me up at 9:30, well, not waking me up, I was watching TV and the windows were closed, and I could hear it while I was watching TV. So they're not, they're not careful, you know? Kids like to play music, loud music, so that could be a problem. But more likely than not, our property values will be negatively affected, and then it'll be too late, and tax-paying homeowners will be losing on their investments in quality of life. No other tennis court in Lake Forest is closer than 45 to 90 feet from other residential property lines. This proposal will set a precedent by letting commercial interests encroach upon residential neighborhoods. This is not Chicago or other suburbs. Let us keep Lake Forest special and unique by adhering to the rules and regulations set out to protect tax-paying homeowners. That is why we live in Lake Forest. According to Woodlands' proposed conditions of the amendment, what they are saying is that all traffic will take place from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., the prime time when we want to enjoy our backyards. A lot of this has been, I've cut out a lot of stuff because it's been hit on by other people. But anyway, when we look at their use schedule with their 122 students, their, Lake Forest College and Lake Forest High School have hundreds of students and only have four courts. So why does Woodlands need five? That's why we are objecting. The extra commercial use of these tennis courts will have a detrimental impact on our comfort, safety, property values, and because of the noise and constant parade of vehicles within five feet of some of our backyards. Noise pollution will be increased exponentially as per the expert noise presentation on March 28th to the zoning commission. If Woodlands was looking at this project from a truly Christian viewpoint on being a good neighbor and doing no harm, Woodlands would use one of their alternate sites and not put a racetrack in our backyards during our prime seasons for outdoor use. Per their testimony on March 28th, four courts seem to be the logical number of courts needed, actually probably overkill, since this stated the fifth court is only for warmups. Eliminating one court would decrease costs for the alternate location problems for Woodlands, as well as their aesthetic concerns and ours. We taxpaying neighbors to the north are the only ones affected and do not have a choice in this matter. Woodlands Academy is not a taxpayer for Lake Forest and should not be allowed to disrupt and impair taxpaying residents' properties. Most of the people that stood up and promoted, backed up Woodlands' project in the past are not people that are affected by this. They don't, either don't live in Lake Forest, or they don't live in our neighborhood, as of, I don't know how many others in this room, you know, it's the same thing. We are the ones affected. We don't have an alternate location for our less than an acre property. Woodlands has over 40 acres with four alternate locations, which they could choose to use, especially if they decrease the number of courts to four and not five, saving them dollars in costs. These alternate locations would not affect our properties. We are angry that Woodlands, a non-taxpayer, is not willing to be a good neighbor and keep their sports complex requirements to the front of their property where it belongs and where the community expects it to be, as it already is on other courts. What we do know is that this-
Excuse me, could you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, I'm on my last sentence. What we do know is that this project will be injurious to the use and enjoyment of our property and will be detrimental and endanger the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of our neighborhood. Please support taxpayers and vote no on this commercial project in our backyard.
Thank you. Ralph Elward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ralph Elward. I live at 748 Waveland. I was on the board at Woodlands Academy for many, many years and served as board chair there as well. In fact, the last time that Woodlands moved to amend the special use permit, I represented both the donors at that time that were giving the property to Woodlands and Woodlands Academy going through this process with you folks, or at least some of the same faces and at least one of the same voices that I can hear. But we worked that whole process and got it to the point where things seemed really good. Let me give you context. Ms. Cerniak did a tremendous job of going through the issues. You know what you have to decide and how you're going to vote on it. But the context I want to give you is to start, first of all, with women's sports. I'm going to tell you that when my mother played high school basketball in the 1940s, there's a little bit of hint in terms of age, the young women who were playing high school basketball could only play half-court. They had to wear skirts, and they couldn't take more than three steps. That's not the way women's sports is anymore. The way we look at women's sports now is they are highly competitive. And we have to be highly competitive as a school to attract that kind of talent. That's one of the reasons why we're trying to upgrade our sports facilities all the way around. We recognized this 10 years ago. We recognized that the best place for the tennis courts is the same place they've been for 50 years, that we need five. Now, I've heard some comments both tonight and at the zoning board of appeals, that because Woodlands is a small school, it doesn't need all that many courts. Well, that's not how it works. This isn't a mathematical ratio of enrollment to tennis courts. You have to look at the sport being played and what's necessary to be competitive in that sport. That takes five tennis courts. That way, we can have all the young women playing, all the matches in one place together. And that works pretty well for women's sports. That's one of the reasons why we really want to support this project. We've worked a long time to get the money together so that Woodlands could do this. They now have it, and we want to have them do it. So I'm going to fully support this. I ask for your support as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Catherine Dorman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Catherine Dorman. My husband, Edward Pacla, and I live at 730 Highview Terrace. We've been in our house 42 years, raised our family there. I know this neighborhood very well. I'm on the north side of the street. I'm not directly impacted by this, but I'm here in support of my neighbors on the south side of the street. I was initially neutral on this project. I went to the evening that Woodland provided with the neighbors. I went to the first zoning board of appeal. I didn't really say anything, just listened at those times. I've come to be against this project. So I want you just to think a little bit about the distances we're talking about here. 10 feet, 20 feet, 25 feet, that's all contained in a room this size. And none of us would want a road 10 feet from our back doors, or 20 feet from our back doors. It's too close to the neighbors' homes and yards. So we're in, this is a very quiet neighborhood, I have to tell you. Once in a while, you hear the train going by, and that's about it. And we're respectful on our small, long, narrow, not lots. We're respectful of each other's privacy and of each other's quiet. This brings extra noise to the neighborhood. It brings car lights into people's houses in the dusk. There's pollution from cars and buses and trucks, starting and stopping. It's very hard to enforce a no idling rule, especially from people coming from outside your own community. Woodlands families would do this because they're good citizens of Woodlands. You have people coming in who are going to ignore that idling. My feeling is that the quality of life for the residents and possibly the health of the residents is impacted by this project. The other thing we haven't talked enough about is the environmental impact of this project. This area where the tennis courts are, I always call it the land of wet shoes because it's always wet. That's where the water's going. And so now we're putting extra impermeable surface in the form of courts, and we're paving a road. I haven't heard enough about where's that water going? How's the engineering going to happen? What's the impact on the ravines on that property? I don't know what rules the city has about this, about how water is directed into ravines, but this really hasn't been addressed as far as I can tell. It surprises me that Woodlands pushes ahead with this project in this corner, knowing its impact on the neighbors. I encourage you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Dave Paddy. Oh, thank you. Bless you. Okay, well, then I will turn it back to the council for discussion. Any following comments, follow-up questions based on the public testimony from any member of the council? Alderman Weber.
Thank you, Mayor.
If I may just jump in, I think we may have had one or two additional people from the public who would wish to speak. I could be wrong on that, but I think we ran out of forums.
Are there others who would like to speak? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, just come on up and introduce yourself, please. And just let us know your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Bridgette Dohini. My address is 815 Barbary Lane. We've been residents of Lake Forest since 2010, and I happen to have a daughter who also attended Woodlands. She's a 2020 graduate. A couple of points I want to make, I think, is, first on the road, there already is traffic back there. This is actually an improvement to the aesthetic of what's behind Woodlands. So I think that's first and foremost. It is actually an improvement to the neighborhood. It is not a detriment in any way, shape, or form. Secondly, as far as the courts, Woodlands has 122 girls. They have a tennis team. In the other schools that have tennis teams, there's five courts. The girls need to be able to complete their matches before the sun goes down. So having those courts right there on campus allows that to happen. I think for those of you who don't know a lot about tennis, it's a quiet sport. It's a silent sideline. There is no profanity. There is no yelling during a tennis match. If you've ever seen Wimbledon or any of the other Grand Slam tournaments, it's silent. It is not a baseball game. It is not a basketball game. So they've already had the tennis courts there. It is a silent sport. It's played during the daylight hours. As far as the camps, these are smaller children that are there, if they're there. It's just an option for the school to have that. And again, they're during daylight hours, and no child is going to camp before 8:00 a.m. And typically, they're done by dinnertime. So I think it's a great improvement to our community. It's a wonderful, mighty school. It's an asset to Lake Forest, and I encourage you to vote yes for the project.
Thank you. Did we miss anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Elizabeth Barry, and I thought it would be helpful if I could demonstrate for you-
Tell us your address as well, please.
754 Highview. I'm immediately impacted by this.
Please, please sit down.
No.
Please, sit down.
We wanted to show you 25 feet and 10 feet.
This is unacceptable.
Why is this unacceptable, Mr. Mayor?
We have public comment. One person speaks at a time. We don't have demonstrations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. I will turn it back to the council for questions and comment. Alderman Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure of visiting the site. I went out and was contacted by a neighbor. And I have a couple of thoughts on this. First is, I think it's so important to, in this position that we are as aldermen and women, to go out and hear out our residents' concerns. So first and foremost, I went out of my way and made sure that I had an opportunity to walk the site, as well as go through all of the ZBA comments meeting, reviewed all of the packet information, and I certainly appreciate all of the comments tonight from everyone who's gotten up to speak. Anytime that you go from a property that has no change and then change is always a challenge. I had a neighbor myself who moved in and wanted to put up a fence right on the property line. And in our neighborhood over in Lasker Estates, it's almost like a no-fence rule. So it was quite shocking that they did that. The fence is 10 feet off the property line, so I'm very, very familiar with where that fence stands. On one hand, it eliminated a lot of concern that we had about neighbors kind of seeing over the line. So we'll call it an improvement. I think the noise is a concern to some extent. I think it's important that we have some sort of regulation in terms of music that's being played, perhaps outside of some certain hours. We have regulations for lawn equipment, and particularly on weekends, we look at gas-powered leaf blowers. So maybe that's something that should be just further explored. But I think change is inevitable, and I, as a female athlete, did not attend Woodlands Academy because it didn't have enough sports for me. And if Woodlands is making a conscious effort to try to increase their competitiveness, I can't support that. But I also support the neighbors because I think having an area of property that's been just open, not used, there's always going to be concern about how that's being used in a very friendly manner. I think the ZBA did a nice job reviewing all of that. I think in an ideal world, sure would be great if Woodlands could afford to do a massive sports complex with things further away from the neighbors. But certainly looking at the fiscal requirements for that, that perhaps this project isn't one that they can afford to do that, and I respect that as well. In the end, I think that working together is really important, and I think that keeping the screening on that property line, big, thick, lush, is very important to me, to keep the neighbors' privacy as best we can. Thank you.
Alderman notes.
First, I want to commend the Director Cerniak and Woodlands Academy for all the efforts you've undertaken to really try and meet the neighbors' concerns, albeit they might not- not feel that the efforts went far enough. But I do think that, to reiterate Alderman Weber's comments, it can be done well and conscientiously of preserving the neighbors' tranquility. One thing that did come to my mind as we were sitting here is pickleball is a relatively new concept north of Florida, but it is a loud sport. And I couldn't agree more that tennis is probably next to golf, one of the quietest sports, but pickleball, contrary, can be kind of loud. So that might be something that we... I know it might sound silly, but you hear that wiffle ball bouncing around on a hard court, and it could probably drive the neighbors mad, hearing that bouncing around all day. So that's one that I would ask the city to go back and reconsider tightening up maybe some of those noise provisions to really make sure they're as tight as possible. Thank you.
Alderman Morris.
Thank you. You know, for 40-something years, I lived about two houses away from the Winter Club. And if you've been over there, they have paddle tennis with lights that are used primarily in the wintertime. They have a hockey rink with pretty loud hockey games going till 8:00 or 9:00 at night with accompanying lights that light up the hockey rink. There's a loudspeaker system. They run a summer camp in the summer for about 100 children. They have hockey tournaments throughout the winter. But I've learned that it's actually an asset for the community. And as I look at what the ZBA has done, I think they've made a pretty darn good effort to accommodate both sides of the equation here. So I think, having walked around, read all their material, I think they've done a good job. So.
Thank you. Alderman Preschlack.
I'd like to echo those comments. You know, I think the goal in our community development process is to really do take a balanced approach. I was on our HPC for six years, and I chaired it one year. And an old colleague that, you know, was just helping me get acclimated to it is, you want to make sure all the voices are heard and that the process plays out. And when you're on the board and commission, you know, they work really hard to make sure that happens, and Kathy does a great job to architect that process. And you want to take a balanced approach, and you want to make sure that all those voices are heard. And not everybody is going to get 100% of what they want, but is the process open? Is there a balance between the neighbors and the current use and the property owners and the neighborhood and the character of our town? And if there's sacrifices on both and the process is architected well, which I do think happened in this case, I really commend the ZBA and all the volunteers on our boards and commissions to go through these processes. And as aldermen, we're really not here to design the projects. We're really here to oversee the process and to see if there's anything that was imbalanced, and then maybe take action. So I'm comfortable that this process was executed well and that this project will be done respectfully for the neighbors and that that be a two-way dialogue to address any screening or noise issues as they arise. So I'm in support of the proposal.
Thank you. Alderman Rumel, would you like to say anything?
No, I don't think you want to say anything. Yeah, can you hear me? Yes. I'm listening to my fellow aldermen, and, you know, this is in War II. I've been hearing from the neighbors. I'm sympathetic to their joy, their quiet enjoyment of their property. On the other hand, I actually went to part of grammar school at Woodlands Academy, and I do appreciate what a valued asset Woodlands is to our community. And I'm also an advocate of all-girls' education in certain respects. And I took a little side trip to Lake Forest Academy recently to see their incredible new athletic facilities. I think they have six tennis courts there for a population of boys that's in the low 200s, boys and girls, I guess now, that's in the low 200s. Absolutely, they have girls there, too, in the low 200s. So I think in order to survive in this competitive environment, these schools have to have athletic facilities that meet their needs. And I think that the ZBA did do a good job looking at alternative sites. I think the staff looked at alternative sites, and they just didn't work. I've heard from a number of tennis professionals who say you have to have five courts even to do these matches that they're doing. The thought of having the JV team up above near the baseball diamond and the varsity team down below, I don't think that works unless you have two separate coaching staffs or something. So I think that our emphasis, and that's where I geared my questions, and that's why I asked Kathy to show that screening. This is close to those neighbors. There's no question about it. And that road, although it is an existing road, so they've had traffic there, but, I mean, it's within 10 feet of some of those backyards. So I just really think that Woodlands has to be conscious of being an incredibly respectful neighbor. And I encourage them to get rid of the buckthorn and put in plantings that will grow as rapidly as possible to screen the backyards. I like the no-idling policy. You are eliminating the backup beepers from those buses, the fact that there aren't any giant buses that will be allowed back there. I mean, I hope that the coaches and the staff will be very conscious of enforcing those rules, and I know that's asking a lot. But I think that they... I hope that they will be responsible in that regard. I wouldn't mind having some sort of time restriction so that the neighbors are assured that they have peaceful enjoyment of their property after a certain hour in the evening so they can sit in their backyards, you know, and possibly something on the weekends. You know, and with Alderman Notes, I have no idea... Someone tried to get me to play pickleball once, and I'm not a tennis or pickleball player, so I didn't know that pickleball tends to be noisy. So, you know, I would entertain some time limits within reason for those camps. Otherwise, you know, the girl season, I think, is pretty short, and I don't think they're going to be playing, because they don't have lights, they're not going to be playing late into the evening. So I just, I think we've done what we can do with this, and it's... And I take my hat off to the staff and to the ZBA, who I really think looked at this proposal from all aspects. And so, you know, it tears me apart. I have sympathies both ways. So those are my comments. I don't know if you want to send it back to ZBA to look at time and pickleball things. I mean, that's up to you. I'd leave that to my fellow aldermen to decide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Karas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add a couple of comments, and then I have a question. So I'm a former college tennis player, so I looked at this. This was really sort of a complex decision that has come before us for a couple of reasons. I live in this neighborhood. I'm right between the college and South Park, so we've lived in our home for 20 years. We hear a lot of games, the football games, now the lacrosse games, which are much noisier sports than tennis. And then there's lots of baseball that happens at South Park, and you can hear a lot of kids at the new playground, which, you know, has never really affected us. And the time that we've been there, the really, the most offensive experience that we've had has not been in recent years, but when the college, there's a lot of college kids that lived in rental units very close to us and used to go from those homes at, I mean, literally all hours of the night. I mean, I can't even really speak to what would come out of their mouths, and we even lost a fence at one point. So I'm keenly aware of how difficult it can be to be in close proximity to a college, you know, with college kids and then near a park. And I understand, as, again, a tennis player, that five courts are necessary. I, you know, was wondering if four courts would be possible, but I realize that, you know, when you do host a match, you usually have maybe, you know, two singles games or matches going on and three doubles matches going on simultaneously. So, you know, I'm a huge proponent of women in athletics. So, you know, that, you know, I really considered that as well. And, you know, again, this is my neighborhood, and I do think that this, you know, the existing courts are and where the proposed courts are going is extremely close. You know, I've looked at it. I've been back there a number of times. So I'm comfortable with this as long as, you know, we can maybe... Again, I don't know how to do this, but I'd like to know if it's possible to approve it with amended conditions, because I do think that we have to... The pickleball, I think, is something that needs to give more, be given more thoughtful consideration. And the buffer with, you know, the depth of the landscaping in a manner that is going to mitigate the sound in, you know, the best possible way is really, really important for, I think, for the compromise, to feel like it is in fact a compromise. So those are... So that's my question and my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if you wanted to make a motion that included additional conditions, you could do that, and then we could vote on that.
Ted, would you like to do that?
Or we could leave it to the good judgment of future people and the good neighborliness of future people to, you know, if some of this turns out not to work, it will certainly come to our attention. It'll come to Kathy's attention, and it's a special use permit. So it can be brought back for reconsideration if an issue evolves.
Yeah, I mean, I think the primary use is tennis. It's pretty clear that that's what the courts are for. I mean, I don't know that we want to get into that much detail. I have a lot of faith in the city staff to, you know, to regulate it. I have a property on Knollwood, and we bought it in '06, and there was small program of skeet shooting. And, you know, shotguns probably within 100 yards, very loud. And Kathy's done a great job of addressing the concerns as they've grown the program. But, you know, I bought the house, and they had skeet shooting there, and I don't like it. If I wasn't an alderman, I would want to sympathize 100% with the adjacent property owners, because that's what I would do. And that's what I do at Knollwood when my wife and I talk about it. But that's not our mandate. We sign up for this to take a balanced approach around how to adjudicate these things fairly, and we want to honor the process that the ZBA goes through and not micromanage and try to put in, you know, details that I think can be captured with the spirit of our community and our community development process. So I have 100% faith in Kathy and Woodlands and the neighbors to figure this out. And I don't think pickleball's starting out of the gate. So I think we just, let's just kind of... I just move that we approve this recommendation and go from there.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mayor, if Alderman Bushman and I could make a few comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't...
Great. Thank you, and I want to...
Can I ask a question? Yeah, I need to know about procedure.
Well, after the second motion, if we're going to get specific with parliamentary procedure, there's a motion, and it's seconded, and that's when discussion formally begins. So if we want to adhere to parliamentary procedure, that's the process, correct? So I'm sorry, Mayor.
There's a motion on the... Just let me just paraphrase that for everybody. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. There is now an opportunity for continued discussion.
Could we have clarification what the motion is saying? To approve the recommendation from the ZBA?
As, yeah. Waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance amending a special use permit for Woodlands Academy of the Sacred Heart, subject to the conditions as recommended by the zoning board of appeals and as detailed in the ordinance.
So moved.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, and it's been seconded, so we can finish up our comments quickly. I think a lot has been said already, and I do want to thank everybody for their input. This is not an easy process, and often when we get into land use issues, there's a lot of passion behind it. And the reality of it is, is that's what our boards and commissions are for. The city council charges them to do their due diligence and sort through all of the facts that are there. I, myself, I have two perspectives on this, quite honestly. I'm a father of collegiate tennis players, and I do understand the needs that the school has to advance their program, and I'm very sympathetic to that. It's an important part of, I think, any individual's development, to be able to have that opportunity, and I acknowledge it, and I applaud your willingness to put that type of an effort forward. And on the other hand, I do want to acknowledge the concerns that the neighbors do have. I think they're very real, tangible issues that have been brought forward, and one in particular, I declined to walk the property. I don't want to get too far down into the weeds. I think that's what our boards and commissions are for, and I think we have to put faith in the process. The reality of it is, is as we have it, there's no ideal solution. There really isn't. And then to Alderman Preschlack's point, I have to take a step back and think, all right, we're on council now, we have to take a 30,000-foot view. And I'm going to be very honest, I have vacillated on this, but when I go back to our original charge as to what we're supposed to do as aldermen, I'm going to say that I don't like it, but I am still going to vote in favor of it. I think that's what I'm supposed to do as an alderman, to disseminate those facts. And then to Jim's perspective or his point, I'm going to put some faith in, and it's well-deserved, city staff, and I know city staff is going to monitor this. And I'm also going to put faith in Woodlands Academy. I hope that they're going to be good neighbors. I think they are good neighbors. There's just not a great solution here, but the one option that I know is not an option is to do nothing. And so therefore, it will be my intention to vote in support of this, acknowledging that it's not a perfect solution, but I don't think there is a perfect solution. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for indulging me.
One, give me a second. I'd like Kathy to speak briefly on the special use permit and the process for handling difficulties that arise under special use permits.
Sure. A couple of thoughts. First, I'll answer your question in a minute, but before I do that, where we have run into problems with special use permits is if the conditions are too restrictive, because we all know that things change, processes or activities evolve, facilities evolve, institutions evolve. So there's that balance between allowing enough flexibility for the neighbors, the institution, and staff to work together. But, Mr. Mayor, as you noted, this is a special use permit, and it can be reopened at any time, either at the request of the petitioner or if an objection is filed and not resolved by other parties. We always work, and certainly we do from time to time with special uses, hear objections. We certainly went through a number of issues with the college. We seem to have addressed those for now. But we... The first thing we do when we get a complaint is try and work cooperatively with all parties to resolve it. But a special use permit can be reintroduced to the zoning board of appeals if we find that something new is happening and the conditions don't satisfactorily address it.
So, for example, Elawa Farm, I think, is the most recent and clearest example of that, where we've completely restructured our entire relationship with them around changes to the special use permit because the uses that they were, you know, undertaking on the site were objectionable to the neighbors. And there were legitimate objections, and it wasn't getting fixed.
Correct. And even presently, Elawa Farm is back before the zoning board of appeals. They have a minor project that they wanted to move forward because of neighbor concerns, interest. We did move it forward to the zoning board of appeals. interest. We did move it forward to the zoning board of appeals, although perhaps a different interpretation could be made. But we always err on the side of being cautious. So...
Thank you. Alderman Bushman, sorry to make you wait.
No problem. Much of what I've said has already been said, but I do want to emphasize one point, and again, it's Kathy in your presentation to advise us, you know, what's happened in a format that gives us an understanding of the whole process. Very much appreciated. And it is a difficult question. But the one comment I do want to add, and it somewhat goes to your point, Mr. Mayor, it's a special use permit. It's things that we don't know how it's all going to be handled going forward, whether it's pickleball or something else. And it reminds me of, early on, we had the gentleman from Great Lakes give us his card, say he's the back door. I would encourage Woodlands to identify a person to the community that they can reach out and communicate concerns, whether it's time, noise, traffic, if those things occur, because that's the best way to resolve, where if you have a neighbor dispute, if the two neighbors can get together and resolve it, that's a win-win. So if, I would encourage, you know, a line of communication be developed. And one other comment on the landscaping, I did look at the ordinance, and it seems to provide good comfort here that it's going to be something that the city controls with semi-annual inspections, input over a three-year period, what's needed, what's not needed, to provide the best screening, the best buffer. So I think we do see some protections there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, I'd call for a roll call vote, please, on the motion that's on the table.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Melanie.
Aye.
Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody for your consideration, your energetic input. And you heard a lot of things here tonight that I think should give you some comfort as neighbors, that you'll have avenues to deal with any problems that occur.
They have avenues to deal with any problems that occur.
The next item on the agenda is additional items for discussion or other comments by city council members. Do we have any additional comments by council members? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.